The clocks for Montgomery County School System School Board set a session for September the 10th, 2024 is now in session. First item on the agenda, FY 2025 ESER 3.0 application first read. Dr. Luna?
Board members, in your packet you will find the ESER 3.0 application board approval. This is an application that is submitted every year to the state by November 1st. This is actually the last of these expenditures related to our COVID relief dollars as we spend down those final dollars, and this is just the remaining dollars left from last year's budget.
Thank you. Next item is director contract renewal extension. First read, Mr. Mark Millen?
Yes, this is just on your agenda because next in two weeks you'll have the opportunity to review and extend the director's contract should the board want to do that. Currently, the director's contract is through June 30th of 2027, so that's three years. The board can have a contract with the director up to four years. And I have sent you a copy of the original contract and the renewal for last year, just so you have that opportunity to review that before we discuss it in two weeks.
Okay. Board members, any questions?
Yeah, if y'all, if you've got any questions, let me know.
Seeing none. Next item, FY 2025 September budget amendments. First read, Dr. Luna?
Yes, I'd like to welcome Chief Financial Officer Jeff Taylor up to discuss the September budget amendments.
Good one. I had one set of notes with nine pages, but I was threatened that I couldn't use those, so I'll go with a shorter amount. Starting with the general purpose fund, the first item is an amendment for the revenues of eighty-six thousand four hundred. This is for the St. Bethlehem Early Learning Center Cub Care estimated revenues that we'll receive for after-school and before-school care for the facility. Moving on to the other revenue, state revenues, excuse me, eight hundred fifty-eight, six thousand eight hundred sixty-five is mostly in regards to the sped pre-K entitlement grant as well as the voluntary pre-K grant, as well as the United Way grant for ninety thousand and the Public School Security Grant of sixty-one. And the FEMA funds, we have two hundred eighty-five thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollar increase from COVID costs and the two hundred twenty-one thousand nine hundred eighty-four for the other governmental and citizens groups. That's just based on year-to-date collections. And then two hundred seventy-five thousand, that was mostly for insurance recovery. That was mostly due for wind damage at some of the facilities that we currently have. And then as increases to our reserves, our reserve for the career ladder, increase of sixteen thousand six hundred ninety-three dollars and an increase to our beginning fund balance of twenty-one million two hundred eight thousand six hundred fifty-four dollars to reflect what our actual ending fund balance was for FY 24. Moving on to the departmental expenditures, starting with seventy-one one hundred regular instruction, majority of this for salaries and benefits is in relation to the United Way Raise Your Hand Grant for seventy thousand nine hundred twenty-two dollars and fifty thousand dollars for moving funds for subs needed for teachers related to curated resources. The decrease is in regards to two hundred ninety-two thousand dollars that'll be moved to the early childhood education from St. B. That was for two PE teachers, one art teacher and one choir instructor, just moving them to the correct function number. And also move travel funds to the correct departments as well. Under special education, the biggest move was in regards to the sped pre-K entitlement grant of three hundred three thousand five dollars as well as moving funds from support staff to subs for forty-two thousand four hundred fourteen dollars. Contracted services, we move funds in regard to the sped entitlement grant of fifty thousand dollars and as well as moving travel to the correct functions as well in that department. And then two hundred two thousand nine hundred ten dollars was in regards to the pre-K entitlement grant. Moving on to the seventy-one three hundred vocational education, majority of this was just in regards to decreases in line items for the Innovative School Models Grant, as you can see, the four hundred eighty-eight thousand seven hundred sixty-four and associated benefits, and then travel was moved to the correct functions and as well as the decreases of the two hundred fifty-two thousand and the increase where you can see we moved most of the money for the Innovative School Models Grant into equipment. That will be, thirty-seven thousand of that will be used. There was also thirty-seven thousand moved from another department code for the Kirkwood High School Automotive Repair, the CTE program out there. Under the health services, you'll see some decreases throughout here, small amounts. Those are in relations to St. B. and Burt Elementary where we removed those allocation funds for those schools. Now that Burt is middle college and St. B. is pre-K program, they still have their allocation funds. They're just located in it and budgeted in a different area now. These are just to remove the old funds that were there for those schools. Under other student support, that hundred seventy-seven thousand seven fifty was in regards to behavioral consultant stipends. Believe they will be paid out in increments of fifteen hundred dollars each semester. Wrong page. Those will be moved out, and then there was a deduction and changes under other contracted services, supplies and materials and equipment to align with what we have budgeted in E-Plan for the Public School Security Grant. Under seventy-two two ten, regular instruction support, we had salary and benefits increases mainly based on using the additional fund balance we received from ESER 3.0, the indirect cost from FY 24. That will be used for professional learning stipends. The contracted services, we're using those funds as well from ESER 3.0 indirect cost. Under the supplies and materials, there was a thousand dollar increase for the JR OTC for gasoline, but we had a thousand six hundred fifty dollar decrease for the allocation piece for St. B. and Burt, and then as you can see, the four thousand dollars as well. Seventy-two two twenty, most of that is in regards to the state sped entitlement grant and changes in the GSG consultants we have, teachers, and their associated benefits with that. Under seventy-two two thirty vocational education and support, that increased, the first one under salary benefits as well as regards to the Innovative School Models Grant, the decrease in the supplies and materials is regards to the Spark Grant. That money's already in reserve from last fiscal year, and then the twenty thousand three hundred sixty-seven dollars is a decrease, and then Innovative School Models Grant. Moving on to the Board of Education, we had to increase the employee benefits due to the increased premiums for retiree medical insurance of a hundred forty-two thousand five hundred ten dollars, and then just some adjustments for some of our job-embedded mentor teachers, changes in the insurance and liability for four thousand. Under Director of Schools, the twenty-four thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars was mostly in the benefits associated with that. It was mostly related to paying out vacation for our previous chief of staff and the overlap that we had in the time that the current chief of staff worked together with her while he was training. Under Printing and Communications, that was, two thousand was just the max time, max comp time payout under Office of the Principal. This, the majority of this is in regards to a request for two addition, two and a half additional assistant principals for East Montgomery, West Creek, and Kirkwood Elementary Schools, just to the growth and enrollment numbers out there. Based on those figures, we need to look at adding two and a half principals for those schools. There was already one existing half a position. I believe it was at West Creek. And then the thirty-four thousand two fifty, that's in relation to online POS system. I believe it's called School Fund Online. We're looking at that currently, trying to find something for the bookkeepers in the schools to use. It's a little bit more efficient that they can take credit card payments with and potentially help with inventory as well. Under Maintenance of Plan, I'll kind of skim through some of these others. The Maintenance of Plan seventy-two six twenty, that increase of twenty-five thousand one ten is for copier costs, and there's also, it's under seventy-two six ten as well for six thousand ninety-six dollars. We have an increased cost in our copiers, but we also have an agreement now to where the high schools at least can get two printers for each school, so we're actually getting more bang for our buck with that additional cost. And then lastly, on the general purpose, under seventy-three four hundred, the three hundred ninety thousand dollars, seventy-five thousand six hundred of that is for the St. B. ELC pre-K Cub Care before and after school for the certified staff along with the benefits. Then the two hundred ninety-two thousand I'd mentioned earlier that we moved, that's where this, those funds were appropriated for those four positions at St. B. Under child nutrition, the only adjustment, we had two adjustments there. One was increasing the fund balance by eight hundred ninety-two thousand five hundred eight dollars to reflect what the ending fund balance was for June of 24. And also, under other charges, added ninety-eight thousand for, to cover any potential food spoilage or damages, just based on previous figures that we've had. Under transportation, and once again, another adjustment to the fund balance, increasing that by three million seventy-five thousand six hundred seventy-nine dollars to reflect the ending fund balance for FY 24. And there was one line where there was some movement, but there's no, it's no new money under salaries, just moving it from one line item to the other, so there's no change in the overall budget in that. Under Extended School, the adjustment to the beginning fund balance was six hundred twenty-one dollars, and then there were some minor adjustments to employee benefits, salaries, and that was it, and those line items, which is a zero effect, and it was in regards to the Summer Learning Program. Under Capital Projects, that number was reduced from nine million eight fifty down to nine point two million, a deduction of six hundred fifty thousand based on what the commission approved for capital projects for FY 25. And lastly, on your federal projects, the first four on that, the Title Programs, all of that is, is reallocation of the funds. There's no new money. It's just being re-appropriated in certain line items. The ARP Homeless Program, CTE Perkins, the IDEA Partnership, and the IDEA Part B, those are just additional funds we're receiving for FY 25, so those are what those amendments are for excluding the CTE Perkins. It was actually a decrease of a hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars. And then on the last, to the IDEA pre-K and the ESER 3.0, we budgeted these funds in March. Those funds that you're showing, that you see that are in the negative, those were the amounts that were spent out of those projects between March and the end of the fiscal year, so we're just decreasing those grants by that amount to make sure that it's equal to what we currently have. And that's it. Do y'all have any questions? Mr. Mayberry?
Just curious, could you, or could someone tell me about the Behavior Consultant Position and what that entitles, entails, I mean?
That is going to be a snippet of what we're going to talk about in just a few minutes, but the Behavior, but it's okay. Behavior consultants are assigned to a variety of schools, and they go in and help teachers with strategies to assist in students who are having exceptional behavior needs.
Okay. I appreciate it. And that, the half AP, what is the, I'm just curious now, we have a AP that is at a school now who's a half-day AP, and they don't have another half already? So what do they do, the other half?
Actually, that one half AP position is vacant. Adding the funding for this position will give them the full position so that they can have the additional assistant principal at West Creek and the other two elementary schools as well.
Yeah, that just caught my attention, because I was thinking, what do they do the other half of the day if there's not another half?
Yeah, so it'll be at West Creek and Rossville Elementary School, and so, once we have the person selected, we'll decide how the time is split. We've talked about a three and two, one week, and a two and three the next week, but I do think that's probably going to be fluid until we see how that, how that all meshes out.
All right. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. The next item is goal number two, meet the unique learning needs of each student with personalized learning experiences. Policy reference EL one E two. E one, E two, Dr. Luna?
Yes, I'd like to ask Dr. Shanda Doughty, Chief Academic Officer, and Jennifer Manise, Director of Teaching and Learning, to discuss the instructional goal of Goal Two.
Good evening, Board. We're excited to be here tonight to talk to you about meeting our students' unique learning needs. Obviously, all of our work and instruction aligns with improving student achievement, as we want to see all of our students excel and be the best that they can be. In particular, this year, we have a goal in CMCSS to meet the unique learning needs of each student with personalized learning experiences. We're excited to be here tonight to highlight some of the work we started last year and to talk about the action steps we're going to take this year in each of some specific areas.
So, as you can see, we have a tiered, a system of approach for both academics and behavior. In this model, it's an ideal world. We know that not all of our schools are an ideal world, so when you look at percentages, this is the ideal world based on our RTI framework that we get from the state of Tennessee. Our students are all Tier One students first, and that goal is that they ebb and flow through the tiers as needed, either on the academic side or the behavioral side. In addition to this triangle, we have a Tier Four group, and these are our students that are most impacted with special education services, and so we also want them to be served in the Tier One setting as well.
Our goal for all of our students is to return them as quickly as possible to their least restrictive environment, so that might be that a student's receiving Tier Four services, but we move them back to Tier Three, but the goal is to eventually get them in that Tier One setting, which means that they're out full days with their peers. So, when we started this work, Ms. Manise and I, last year, we started with a team of experts who are longtime teachers and employees in CMCSS, and we felt like the first thing that we needed to do was to ground our framework in a vision of what we wanted our students to accomplish. So, together, we wrote this vision for our Unique Learning Needs Team and students, and our vision was that we would work in partnership with all stakeholders to ensure every student's individual needs are met in their least restrictive environment through quality educational plans so that they can all achieve their fullest potential. From there, as we started to dig into this work, we realized that we needed some, some footers in our house, and so we called those our proactive measures, and we decided we were going to take proactive measures by making data-driven decisions, ensuring that kids were always at the heart of every decision that we made, and that we wanted every kid to have access to high-quality instruction, whether they were in Tier One or Tier Four. Those things were very important to our team. So, tonight, we're going to highlight for you a few of the unique learning needs that we see prevalent in our CMCSS students. Some of those are our students with English Language Learners, students who receive a 504 plan for individualized accommodations in the classrooms, students who receive behavior support plans, students who receive individualized learning plans that are specific due to dyslexia, and our students who receive individualized education plans.
So, for English Language Learners, we've had, in the 2324 school year, we were able to have over two hundred participants comprising of administrators, academic coaches, teachers, educational assistants, attend the Seven Steps for a Language-Rich Classroom Training. This course focuses on creating a language-rich environment which benefits all students, particularly our English Language Learners. The strategies and concepts from this training have been integrated into Tier One instructional practices in these teachers' classrooms across the district. The integration is crucial as it directly impacts the quality of education in our classrooms, helping all students develop their language skills and participate more actively in their learning. Our action steps for this upcoming school year, one of our key focuses will be providing ongoing training to all EL teachers and general education teachers on the new ALPA 21 standards. Our state made a decision to switch from the WEDA standards to the ALPA standards, and that transition has created a need for us to train correctly on those standards. Regardless of, this training is essential to ensure that all teachers, regardless of the subject that they teach, have a comprehensive understanding of the standards and how to apply them effectively in their classroom. Our aim is to enhance and support our English Language Learners, which in turn benefits all students by fostering an inclusive and engaging environment. Section 504, Accommodations. Some of our celebrations are, we are very proud that the Department of Education has recognized and commended our district's processes and procedures and resources related to Section 504 compliance. Key achievements from the previous year include comprehensive Section 504 IDEA compliance training for all administrators, building-level coordinators, both certified and classified staff members. The training has provided a crucial role in ensuring that our district remains in full compliance with federal requirements while effectively supporting our students with Section 504 requirements. Neat. Our action steps for the 2425 school year, we will continue on our momentum by implementing monthly touchpoint trainings, offering dedicated office hours to further support our staff as they're supporting our students. Additionally, we will be distributing monthly newsletters to Section 504 building coordinators and administrators, ensuring that ongoing communication and reinforcement of the best practices maintain our high standards of compliance and support for students. Behavior supports. This past year, we provided professional development on eight effective classroom practices for both general education teachers and special education staff. This equips them with strategies to effectively manage classroom behaviors. We also delivered individualized professional development opportunities to all staff members, from our bus drivers to our educational assistants, certified teachers, and our administrators, to ensure that everyone is prepared to support positive student behavior across all settings. Our action steps for this upcoming year is we plan to initiate collaborative behavior team meetings to foster a coordinated approach to behavior management, regular behavior team meetings to meet on those students that need a behavior plan so that we can regularly review that plan and make modifications if the student needs. We will offer a multi-tiered system of support involving the behavior coordinators, board-certified behavior analysts, behavior interventionists, behavior consultants, and behavior technicians to provide tailored behavior interventions and support based on student needs, in particular, in the buildings. Our ILPDs are individualized learning plans that are dyslexic-specific. This past year, we were able to provide comprehensive training for building representatives and administrators on the ILPD protocol to ensure consistent and effective implementation across all of our schools. Throughout October 2023, we hosted open Zoom sessions specifically designed for parents to provide information to them about dyslexia and how to support their students if they are having these characteristics. In the spring of 2024, we provided specialized training for interventions for academic coaches and teachers to enhance their ability to deliver dyslexic-specific interventions. This ensures that our instructional staff is well-equipped with strategies and tools necessary to support all of our learners. Sorry, went too fast. Our action steps for our ILPD will be, we've had multiple summer trainings at our Engage Sessions. We do have several self-paced courses that teachers can take along with classified staff if they want or need more information on specific topics. We have year-long professional learning communities, teaching all learners to read, that teachers in classified can sign up for. We have development of the ILPD teams in schools. We have an ILPD hub that will serve for both educators and parents as a resource, and we will be hosting community-based dyslexia screening and informational events at our CMCSS Learning Center next to more this year. Individualized education plans, also known as IEPs. These individualized plans are, last year, our instructionally appropriate individualized education plans training provided all of our administrators and special education teachers to surpass the Tennessee Department of Education Annual Performance Report, the APR, Least Restrictive Environment that Dr. Doughty talked about earlier. Our Least Restrictive Environment target last year was seventy-six point oh-six for the 2324 school year for K-12, and we were able to exceed that. In the 2425 school year, we will continue training and support around instructionally appropriate individualized education plans that require the implementation of high-quality interventions and high-quality core support.
I also just want to take a second to point out that when we're referencing Least Restrictive Environment, the bubble graphic here is a great representation of that, and that eighty percent of students who have a disability also have average intelligence, which is important for us to continue our work to make sure that our students' personalized learning needs are met, and we do that through high-quality core support and ensuring kids have intervention in the areas that they need it, which is that personalized piece. So, this highlights the work we started last year and the work that we're looking forward to continuing this year in regards to meeting the unique learning needs of each students with personalized learning experiences. What questions do you have for us?
Mr. Mayberry?
The behavior support plans, how long has this been in place in the district?
Well, a long time. However, we started training about that and ensuring our teachers and our administrators and our families had a better understanding of how they could be used to assist students last year, and that's one of the reasons that we're excited to include that as part of our work, going in and teaching the eight classroom best practices. I don't know if that's the formal title, but it really helps all of our teams to have a good understanding of what should be happening in Tier One, and then those plans help us to know that if students need support elsewhere because of their behavior in Tier Two, Tier Three, or quite frankly, even in Tier Four because of behavior, it's allowed us to identify that and make those accommodations. So, those have been around for a while, Erin, but, but again, I think that we just continue to improve and get better at it.
Is this a state or federal mandate, or is this something we just do here?
I, I'm not, if it's a state or federal mandate, I'm not aware of it. I mean, you know, we're going to do the right work for our kids, and this is what our kids and our teachers and our community needed. In addition to that, we also do some, some family classes and family support, and I was in a school recently where one of our behavior consultants was actually also helping the parent know how to manage particular behaviors at home. So, it's, it's about doing the right work. So, I'm not comfortable saying it's not a state or federal mandate, but we are trying to personalize it to our community.
Gotcha. Obviously, behavior is a big issue amongst our community. The, if I hear someone say that a child has had a behavior, did something wrong, that a general population student would be expelled for, but then they don't get expelled for that behavior, is that because of an IEP, or is that because of one of these? What would that be, class manager?
So, there are students who receive Tier Four support because of their individualized education plan, in particular, to behavior, and I think that's probably what you're referencing. And so, again, special supports have to be put in place for those students, and it's very important for us as a district to ensure that we have done all the appropriate work to meet that student in that Tier Four setting, and I think that probably answers your question.
Yeah, yeah, so it had nothing to do with the behavior support plan, then? That has to do with an IEP?
Correct. I would also say if there's any sort of a behavior that would result in any type of expulsion and a student has an IEP, what has to occur by federal law is something called a manifestation, and so essentially, that has to be determined by an entire team if it was a manifestation of the disability or not. If it was not a manifestation based upon the disability, then that discipline still upholds.
So, let me ask a question. If, if there was a behavior and a student did something, because I know federal law says that there could be a period of ten days that a child, even with an IEP, they can be removed from the school. So, if the behavior happens, they have an IEP, but they're not, they're like returned to the class really quickly. I've heard that time and time again. Would that just be an administrator not following through with the code of conduct? What would that be?
I would say anything like that, we would just address on an individual basis. With forty thousand students, it's really hard to determine.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
And I think, you know, we're always here to support. And I think, you know, we're always here to support and answer questions that you have.
Seen no other question, thank you for your presentation, and that was a very smart move that you made, that you don't know whether or not there was a law.
Just do what's right for kids, right? That's our motto, actually, of our instructional team, so they do great work.
Very well. Uh, County Commissioners' comments? Board Members? Additional comments? Ms. Berry?
I would just like to welcome Casey and Chris to our school board team, and look forward to working with you to do what's best for the students in C M C S S.
Mr. Mayberry?
I too want to echo Ms. Berry, Berry's uh, comment there, welcome to Casey and Chris. Um, also want to ask uh, the Chair to put our governance policy to be placed on as a topic in our study session in October. Our request that the Chair puts it on the agenda to discuss, um, and to begin a comprehensive review of the board policies at this study session. After serving for two years on the board, I believe a review would be beneficial for our board, thank you.
Miss, Mr. Nelson?
I just wanted to go ahead and uh, welcome the two new board members on board and looking forward to working with you.
Yeah, I think that we have a retreat in October, I think, as a board, why can't we do it at the time? Policy owners? If I may ask. Mr. Mayberry?
So I just want to start the conversation, and, and I mean, yeah, we can continue the conversation at the retreat, but I believe the study session would be a good time to start that.
Attorney Nolan, what do you say?
The board can put things on the agenda when they want to put things on the agenda. So, and, and I think what Mr. Mayberry is asking is he's raising his hand, saying he wants that on a future agenda, let's start in October. When the board finishes up its review, that's up to the board.
Okay, okay. Dr. Luna? I, I would also like to echo on the welcomes, uh, the bottom line is you're on a, this is your second school. But this is a different kind of school. This is a school board team that's here to make sure that our students and our staff receive the quality tools that they need. In order to be able to educate our children and prepare them for the global economy. Again, welcome to both of you. I know I've been here for a minute, I think I'm the oldest sitting board member up here right now. But the bottom line is, that doesn't mean that uh, uh, that don't make me less. Uh, I think that uh, I, I uh, I am proud of the accomplishments of C M C S S, the team, staff, and our director. As I was telling uh, Chris, you know, every time that we bring on a new director, and I think that if, if you're around long enough, you're going to find this true in your tenure as well. The new director take us to the next level, we never stay where we are as we transition from one director to another. And I uh, I salute our director and the team for actually continuing the trend. That's my comments, Dr. Luna?
Good evening, Board Members, we are halfway through the first quarter of the school calendar, I actually counted. Um, and we have had a great start to the year. In pre-K through twelve, our enrollment currently is right at forty thousand students for the twenty-four twenty-five year. I want to thank our building administrators, faculty, and staff members for the positive energy and academically focused kickoff. During school visits, I've been impressed with the welcoming environments and engaging lessons that I've witnessed. We've added a more intentional focus on career and technical education in middle schools with new materials and curriculum that have been a huge success with our students. As they're planning for high school academies and elective courses, I can't wait for you to learn more about it in the comings, in the coming months. Open houses have all been well-attended by parents and guardians, and I am loving middle school football games that I know some of us are getting out of here to head to in a minute. That have been filling the stands on Tuesday and Wednesday evenings. Community support and parent engagement with our schools truly do make C M C S S special. Parents will receive um, a three-day weekend with your children this weekend, as faculty and staff will have professional development on Monday, September sixteenth. Finally, I would like to extend one last welcome to our two new school board members, Casey Bryant and Chris Lanier. We have only been together a short while, but I am very excited about um, them joining the board and looking forward to continued collaboration. Mr. Garland, this concludes my remarks for the evening.
Should I let them go?
Yes, we have the call to go too.
Just made it adjourned, thank you.